Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Special Meeting and Regular Workshop Meetings. The Council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At special meetings, the Council takes formal action on specific items, and during the workshops, only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. For those who are present, they're also in the back my right next to the entry doors. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting videos available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit comments or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Yes. House members, we're all here. President Blaisdell.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Paralus.
Present.
Mayor Portem Milne.
Here.
And Mayor Serrano.
And present.
Thank you. And if you'll all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And as I mentioned, this is our special meeting. For anyone following along, we're on now on item number four, which is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We have Resolution Number 4416, Change Order Number 7, for the East Urban Growth Area, the UGA, Expansion Sewer Local Improvement District, or LID, Number 152 Phase 1 Project. And we are going to hear from Interim Director Maria Sara.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the item we presented last week related to a change order to allow for a change in casing to be installed under the NSF railroad to perform the last boring for this project. We have already performed six borings in this phase, two other borings in a different phase, so total of eight borings. The last boring that is needed, we were performing this work and found obstructions which are rocks bigger than what was previously identified or expected to find, making it impossible to perform the work with the specified size of casing. And this change order allows for modifying that casing size to a 36-inch, which allows for basically deploying equipment inside of that casing so that any obstruction we find can be fractured and then make this successful. With that in mind, I know I mentioned last week the estimated cost for the change order was going to be in the order of $650,000 plus tax. That cost is actually $664,000, I'm running, plus tax. And the documentation you're seeing in the packet shows the total change order cost of $1,000,87,000 dollars and some other dollars after that, which does not reflect the credit we will receive for the item that will not be performed. That is, that item that exists in the contract will not be used for that 24-inch casing. Instead, we'll have a credit for it. This change order allows for the work to be done with the bigger size. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from Council? Seeing none, and I know, oh, sorry, Mr. Paralus.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, could you just kind of give like a general overview as to why it's that much? I know we had emails today, it's kind of, you know, it seems like a lot of maybe, maybe perhaps we don't do it. So if you can just kind of give like a general overview as to why it's that much, whether it's materials, labor, just something like that, so that people can understand why it's, you know, the change order that we have to do. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So this change order includes full installation of the casing, the procurement of the casing. But really, the difference is the size of the casing is much bigger, right? It's diameter, 36 inches versus 24 inches. And for the installation itself, it requires different equipment. So there is that cost for mobilizing that equipment to the site specifically for this one boring.
Anything further? Okay. With that, I believe you're seeking approval of this change order. Let's just go ahead and do a, we'll do a motion and then we'll do a roll call. Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4416, authorize the city manager to execute change order Number 7 to the construction contract with Tappanoy Incorporated for the East UGA Expansion Sewer LAD Number 152 Phase 1 Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Like I said, we'll go ahead and just do a roll call on this one since we're in a special meeting.
All right. Councilmember Baraha.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grim.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Paralus.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn our special meeting. And equally rapidly, I will open our workshop meeting. Now, having done the introductory stuff, the roll call, the pledge of allegiance, let's roll on to number four, which is verbal reports from council members. So do we have any reports? Looks like Mr. Harpster's already lit up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have lit. Yeah, on Thursday, the Ag Hall of Fame, Mayor Portem Milne and Councilmember Blaisdell were also there. It was a very long event, but the Pasco Chamber of Commerce did a great job hosting it and honoring the folks. And, you know, I'll be honest, I wanted to get up and leave early. But we're there to honor folks. We spent a lot of time behind the scenes, ensuring that we have food here. And one of the folks that they awarded the visionary award to was former Representative Doc Hastings. And that was cool to see. Sort of, he made a kind of sort of culmination to his career. And appreciated him coming out. And then lastly, I just want to mention that today is the 13th anniversary of my wedding to that woman in the white shirt up there. Some of you, yeah, believe me, she deserves every clap. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Being no additional mics, I will tell you that I did attend the Anford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee meeting. And I know I talk about this a lot. Bottom line, as money comes through Anford and back into the community through this program, typically we do loans, but I want to note, and we're working on this project, we're actually contemplating and clearing the legal hurdles to actually do grants to municipal governments. To be clear, I won't hopefully be sitting on the advisory board for that element. I want, especially if the City of Pasco seeks money. But for those who are representatives, whether it's those my right for the City of Pasco or anyone else involved, and other local government entities, there will be some grants. I don't, again, I'm not going to speak to the terms or conditions, but that's something that I think is very beneficial to this community. It might be some smaller governments, you know, out in the county, whether it's Benton or Franklin County. So just be on the lookout for that, for these representatives of we the people. And so, yeah, I'm excited to see that money roll out. With that, we'll roll on to item number five, which is, five A is Benton Franklin Council of Governments' presentation. It looks like Deputy City Manager Sigdel will kick off, and then Michelle Holt will lead us presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce Michelle Holt, the Executive Director of the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, or BF COG. It is a prominent organization that has played a pivotal role in planning, regional planning and governance. The Benton Franklin Council of Governments operates under state law as a regional planning commission, a council of governments, and serves as a regional transportation planning organization. This multifaceted approach allows BF COG to address a wide range of regional issues and collaborate effectively with local governments, ensuring that the needs and the priorities of our communities are met. And with that, I would like to welcome Michelle.
Okay. Well, good evening, Council. And I appreciate the opportunity to give you some background on the Council of Governments and our work, and also information on changes to our interlocal agreement that you will be considering in an upcoming meeting. First of all, I want to let you all know how much we as staff at the Council appreciate the working relationship we have with the staff of the City of Pasco. It's very nice for me to come and present to you, but it feels like speaking with friends. We work very closely, and that's something that is very valuable to us in our ability to support the work that you do as the city. So I am Michelle Holt. I'm the Executive Director for the Council of Governments. And I joined the Council in February of 2021. So I'm just coming up on my third year, which has flown by. Oh, perfect. So the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, as Risha mentioned, we were established as a voluntary association of the local units of government in Benton and Franklin Counties. We are made up of the cities, counties, and port districts between the two counties. And the original vision was to provide a forum for improved communication, multi-jurisdictional decision-making, regional planning, and provide lead agency capacity for multi-jurisdictional programs. The services we provide to our member jurisdictions are outlined in our interlocal agreement. And these can evolve based on the needs of the communities at large. We currently fulfill several designations on behalf of our governments in our two counties. We are a Council of Governments under RCW 3664. We are the Regional Planning Commission, also by state RCW. Under the Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit, we serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Transportation Management Area. So what that really means is we are looking at the transportation system of the region as a whole to ensure that it's a cohesive functioning unit, understanding that each piece is owned by different jurisdictions. Under that same vein, we are the Regional Transportation Planning Organization under WashDOT at a state level. And we also serve as the Economic Development District under the Economic Development Administration, allowing for access to EDA programs. So in a nutshell, we just like to say that we convene our local governments to collaboratively plan, fund, and administer solutions to shared community needs. When you think about a Council of Governments, they really are unique to their individual communities. So while we have things that we must do as the planning organization or as the Economic Development District, we are really a tool that allows our jurisdictions, any two or more, to partner together on a solution that might bring shared resources or shared programs. I think that historically, we have been very much focused on our transportation work first and foremost. And so I don't think that the Council is often top of mind when you're thinking about, is there a tool that could help our communities collaborate? So that's something that we are trying to promote amongst all of our agencies. Is think of the Council as a potential opportunity and a tool for providing programs or services that maybe we hadn't considered in the past. So before I review any of the details about the COG, we're a pretty complex organization. First, let me ease your mind that the 15 PowerPoint slides that went out in your packet, we are not going to review all of those. But I wanted you to have them because it's helpful to be able to really dig in and see what each of those designations mean and how we're working on your behalf. But really, let's just get to the good stuff. What have we done for you lately? So if we look at the City of Pasco, transportation planning and funding, between 2019 and 2023, $3.94 million has come to Pasco for transportation projects under our Call for Projects program. In fiscal years '24 and '25, we have multiple transportation improvement projects included in our transportation plans. And as I mentioned before, working with Maria and the transportation staff is a joy for us. We also helped to coordinate the Washington State Transportation Commission meeting that was held here in October. And what a great opportunity for us to have state representation here in your city and learning more about the challenges we have for transportation here. Under Economic Development, we received two years ago a $600,000 grant from the EPA to conduct brownfields assessments and planning activities. We are just finishing up a $59,000 investment in a downtown brownfield inventory and a reuse analysis on the Thunderbird Motel property that I know that you'll be hearing more about in the future. We also host congressional meetings on behalf of our jurisdictions to make it easier for you to have communication with all of the staff representatives for our congressional offices. And we've had the pleasure of having the City of Pasco participate in four of those in the last year. We serve as the Notice of Record Agency for notices of funding opportunities from the federal government. And we share those with all of our jurisdictions. But specifically this year, we've worked with the City of Pasco to discuss whether there's feasibility for applications for EDA tech hubs, a Commerce Energy Grant, and other EDA funding opportunities. Under our broadband action team, the Council of Governments serves as the co-facilitator for the Benton Franklin Broadband Action Teams, where we received grant funding specifically for Franklin County to produce an executive summary and review of documents for the application for broadband equity deployment and accessibility funding. A lot of that was a background work in order for our communities to be able to apply for funds in the future. So if we can go back one slide, just because this is really my favorite part to share with you. So in 2023, the annual assessment that the city paid to the Council of Governments was $44,951. That's 17.2% of the overall local funds budget. We'll talk about that in just a second. But the part I'd like to share is that the five-year return on that investment to the City of Pasco in these specific services turns out to be $28,061 for every dollar that you invested back in the Council of Governments over the last five years. So we endeavor to be of value and a support for you all. Next slide. So just a brief snapshot of funding. 86% of the funding that the Council of Governments uses to operate comes from state or federal program dollars, with 13% of our overall budget coming from local funds. Now, those local assessments are a one-time invoice that we assess to our member jurisdictions. And out of right now, the only money that we charge is what we are required to match for those federal programs. So we are not charging any additional funding for operations of the Council of Governments at this time, just what we are required to match those federal programs. So for transportation funding, that's a 13.5% total match. For our economic development program, that's a 100% match. So we receive $75,000 a year from EDA, and we match that with $75,000 in local funding. We do also provide contracted services to administer other small local government entities, of which the City of Pasco, for example, is a member of the Tri-Cities Regional Public Facilities District. And the Council of Governments provides administrative support for that. Next slide. So regional planning, that's what we refer to as our metropolitan planning and regional transportation planning activities. Those focus on transportation and land use. A couple of key things I do want to draw your attention to would be those activities that are specifically required or specifically allow you access to funding and other programs. We do the Call for Projects to do a funding allocation of $6 million roughly a year for local transportation projects. This funding is only available to jurisdictions through their local NPO. We conduct a 20-year regional mobility needs assessment plan called a Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And again, transportation projects that are not part of this MTP are not eligible for state and federal funding. So that collaboration is really important to your ability to access funding for transportation projects. The Transportation Improvement Program, we assist the jurisdictions in following those administrative requirements for WashDOT. Again, projects that are not entered in that program are not eligible for state funding. So again, very important. And then regional transportation priorities. We annually select and highlight priority projects for the region in order to allow local, state, and federal funding agencies and others to really see what we view as priorities to support grant applications. Under the Comprehensive Growth Management Act, we are required to certify your transportation plan under your comp plans. We also do travel demand modeling and land use scenarios that we keep up on your behalf so that the jurisdictions do not have to take on the burden of doing that work individually. And of course, we have other services available as requested. So that might be land use planning, land suitability analysis, mapping services, or equity data support. Again, depending on the size of the jurisdiction and the...
...review, and it showcases projects in economic areas. Again, in order to access funding through the Economic Development Administration, those projects need to be highlighted in this particular planning document. Funding technical assistance is also an important area of support. We mentioned the notice of funding opportunities, but also really trying to do some of that legwork and analysis to see who has projects, what funding might be eligible, how can we help folks partner together? For example, the Economic Development Administration alone has $3.5 billion available nationally for community building programs. So how are we setting up educational opportunities and networking that allows us to really be aware of how we can be supporting our communities in accessing those funds? I did mention our ability to be a lead agency and our brownfields program. Again, I just want you to have that in the back of your mind that as you're looking at issues, especially those that are of regional concern, how might the Council be able to support you in that? So when we talk about local government resources internally, what we're really asking ourselves is how can we help our members access those state and federal funds? How can we help our jurisdictions partner on programs that solve those issues of mutual concern? How can we be a resource that provides value? And how can we help our members look at issues on a regional scale? And really think about, how are we as the Benton Franklin region? So with that, I want to talk just for a second about the interlocal cooperation agreement that we have. So in May of 2023, the Board of Directors unanimously approved new bylaws and amended what was previously our 2020 interlocal agreement. So we will be seeking ratification by the City of Pasco of this interlocal agreement. City of Pasco is the last of our jurisdictions to get that ratification. So I'm excited to have that show up on a future agenda soon. But what I wanted to answer for you all is the understanding that the interlocal agreement itself did not undergo substantive changes. It didn't change anything to do with our relationship to each other, how we are funded. It's really those administrative changes. So for example, Mayor Serrano mentioned the, yep, the loan fund. Thank you. I was going to say have. It was the wrong Hanford acronym. The COG had for many years also operated revolving loan funds, and we're in the process of phasing those out. So for example, in the previous version of the interlocal agreement, one of the "whereas" is very specifically mentioned the revolving loan fund. But in fact, our ability to provide the revolving loan fund actually had to do with the fact that we work underneath the Public Works Economic Development Act of 1965. And so that gives us a broader ability to support economic development activities. So the "whereas" was changed to actually acknowledge where the federal authority to work on economic development came from. The updated version removes a lot of procedural information that was really more suitable in the bylaws and didn't need to be duplicated in the interlocal. So it's actually a more simplified version than its predecessor. The wording and layout and language were updated so that the language in the bylaws and the interlocal support each other. Little things like instead of referring to BF COG as the Council, it's referred to as the COG. And then we did format it this go-around for everybody's benefit to be able to be signed as independent counterpart agreements and not having to circulate a single document that we get everyone's signatures on, which was really kind of burdensome for everybody. So when you see that come forward, that's really the reason for that interlocal change and that ratification. So on that, I realized that I could spend hours to try and tell you all about the things that the Council of Governments is involved in. But we will save all of our time for that. But I do welcome your questions. And if at any point, when you go through those slides, you know, bedtime reading material, if a question emerges, please don't hesitate to reach out and ask that.
Thank you very much. Looks like Mr. Grim's got his mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Holt. Thank you so much for your presentation. Mayor Serrano appointed me to the Council, so I look forward to representing the City Council in the City of Pasco with you. And I look forward to you getting me up to speed. It sounds like there is a lot to digest there and everything. And so, yeah, I look forward to working with you and representing the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be happy to have you.
Mr. Paralus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had, very, very nice to meet you. I just had a question about your broadband, access to broadband project. And you have talked with the city about how we could help or assist with that, because I know that's, you spoke to it at the Commissioners' meeting a couple of weeks ago, and so that really caught my attention. So if you could just shed some light on that.
Yes, actually, the city's IT director participates on our action team. And we're in a state of transition at the moment. The broadband action team originally was brought together very specifically to pull together data and information to support the state's application for the federal bid funding, the accessibility and deployment funds, of which Washington State successfully is receiving $1.2 billion. So now the state office is going through its process to determine So now the state office is going through its process to determine how they are going to open up the applications and what boundaries they're going to put on accessing those dollars. And so we're waiting to see how that's going to come out and and how we can support any applications that will come from jurisdictions or from specific internet service providers to try and access those dollars. So we'll support that with data and other information. And then in the meantime, we also have a digital equity subcommittee that is continuing to delve into that greater, more nebulous issue of what are the other barriers to accessibility? When you actually look at the data, you have a donut hole in downtown Pasco, actually, where there is internet infrastructure available and yet a very large number of the population either do not do not identify as having a computer or having access to the internet. And so we want to understand why that is. Is it cost? Is it language? Is it computer knowledge and usability? So how can we rally those service organizations that do work with especially covered populations in order to improve that problem?
I just had one other question. A lot of it had to do with your your presentation at the commissioner's meeting. But I actually have two more questions. For the for the brownfields sites, I mean, what is their criteria? Because you mentioned that we're looking at something with the Thunderbird Motel. I mean, what qualifies for the kind of that site criteria?
Yeah. So a brownfield has a really broad definition and it could be any site that is suspected of having contamination. But contamination could come from just having a building that was built before the seventies that might have lead-based paint or other regulated building materials in it's just in in how it was built for either demolition or if it's going through a remodel, for example. So for the Thunderbird property, even though when the city had acquired the property and had gone through and done the demolition, we weren't working with this grant program at that time. Had we been, we could have perhaps done some assessments on the front end. You guys took care of that already. But we are also able to do some planning activities, both site-specific and area-wide. And so that's really what we've been working on with this project downtown is how many other buildings in the downtown core meet the definition of a potential brownfield that might require some remediation or further assessment in order to enable a property owner to do some updating. And then the case of the the now lot that used to be the Thunderbird Motel, we could also do some assessments and provide some scenarios for what might be a higher and better use of that property. Yes, it could be a parking lot, but could it also be something else that might drive the economy? So we're able to pay for that under this this grant and give you some options to consider as a council.
Okay. And then one last question. It's in regards to the Columbia Building Appeals Commission. I was I'm that was kind of new to me. I know I've heard of it. Where is that currently? I think the BF Cog is supposed to be running it. So I was just kind of wanting to see if that's something you guys are looking to bring back to some to some sort?
We are, actually. So at some point prior to my tenure with the Cog, the Cog had been involved in not full administration of the Building Appeals Commission, but we did help with appointing the representatives that served on the commission and administering that process. At some point pre-COVID, around two thousand and eighteen, the Building Appeals Commission just stopped. I can't even give you a better explanation than that. We have since it working with the jurisdictions. They've realized that there are, due to the International Building Code and state building code, there is a requirement to have the appeals commission. And so I'm in the process now of going back and doing the research for what effort do we need to put in to bring it back? And are there changes that we need to make in how it's administered so that whatever caused it to lapse in the past wouldn't happen in the future? So I expect that we'll see a proposed new updated operating information coming back to the jurisdictions to consider within the next few months in order to do that.
Excellent. Seeing no further question, obviously a very comprehensive presentation and I'm sure there'll be some follow-on questions because you do you all do a lot of work and a lot of important work. So thank you for coming down and thank you for sharing this and hopefully the public's also been educated, too.
Thank you all very much.
With that, we'll move on to item number or item letter V, which is cardiac arrest response demonstration by our not our one and only Pasco Fire Department led by Chief Crowley. And hopefully they're still around. I did hear a siren.
They're coming. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is the pleasure of the Fire Department to have this opportunity to provide a demonstration and to walk you through the steps that our crews take when treating a patient in cardiac arrest. During this demonstration, you'll notice the staff needed to provide the best care along with the cutting-edge technology that we use to provide our patients with the best possible outcome for survival. With that, I'd like to introduce our medical officer, Captain Chris Mortensen. He will be walking us through the demonstration along with giving a quick PowerPoint presentation. And then if there's any questions at the end of it, we'll go ahead and answer those at the end of the demonstration. So with that, I'll pass it over.
Thanks, Steve.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to stand before you tonight. We want to talk about the emergency medical services that we deliver to the citizens of Pasco, kind of talk about our performance measurements and our report cards that we got back recently, which I'm really excited to pass along. We did very, very well. And we specifically want to talk about our cardiac arrest survival rates tonight. So we also have a demonstration, so I'm going to try not to get too heavily involved in PowerPoint by death tonight, make it a little bit fun later on and maybe get one of you, two of you involved in the whole thing. So so cardiac arrest, it's one of the most impactful events that we have that we can provide our citizens is getting that our crews on scene early, recognizing that there's cardiac arrest. It's a public, really, recognition. So there's a program called CARES and it is a state and national-run program. It's a registry where we input all the data from our cardiac arrests. We compare it against our local, regional, national standards and find out where we are really as an agency. Stands for Cardiac Arrest Registry to Enhance Survival. What it does basically is it's a data mining platform where we can get some of the reports back for our times, times on scene to provide our policymakers such as yourselves with the tools necessary to provide us the resources to make sure that we're given the best possible care to our patients. So if we can go to the next screen. So within the CARES platform, there's a tool called the Oostein Scale. And what the Oostein Scale really identifies is how we're doing as a community. When there's a cardiac arrest that happens, it's usually witnessed, hopefully bystander witnessed, witnessed in the home, witnessed by a relative, in a nursing home by nursing staff. And what we're really hoping for is that we have community members who are willing to immediately intervene, call nine-one-one, start the early process of compressions so that we can have a better chance of survival for the patient. That early recognition, that early notification of nine-one-one is crucial. We found out the American Heart Association does a ton of studies every single year to basically look at the timelines and the compression rates, getting blood flow to the to the brain and really understanding what we need to do as a community to best have a great performance on that. So Oostein, there's a couple of different matrix matrices in there. There's a bystander that's witness, that's an Oostein Scale one, and the patient's in a shockable rhythm. And then there's bystander witness, shockable rhythm, and the bystander actually provides some sort of intervention. What we're looking for is that bystander intervention towards the bottom of that. If we can have a bystander witness that there's an arrest, call nine-one-one early, that's great. But if they're comfortable and able to start the early process of revival, it greatly enhances the patient's outcome. So with that Oostein Scale, we have a what we call cerebral performance category. The whole purpose of CPR is to get blood flow up to the brain. We want to make sure that there's cerebral performance stays intact as long as we're pumping the chest and the heart and getting blood up to the brain, we're circulating the oxygen needed for the brain to survive. And we can do that mechanically for as long as we need to do. After five minutes of no brain or no blood circulation to the brain, we start to see cellular death of the brain. After eight minutes, the patient's outcome is almost none. So as early we can see or as early as we can recognize that and activate the system, the better outcome. So we have some CARES report card numbers back. Unfortunately, we don't have the two thousand and twenty-three numbers yet. We have to upload all of our cardiac arrests into the system by December thirty-first for the prior year. We don't get our scorecard back until mid-April. So we're waiting on our two thousand and twenty-three numbers, but we have some fantastic numbers for two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-one, we did pretty well. We had six total patients who their outcome out of the hospital was a category one or two on their cerebral performance category. And what that really means on a category one and two is that they're going to be able to live a full and sustainable life. They're most likely going to have to do some cardiac rehab, but their quality of life is going to remain intact. And that's what we're aiming for. That's what we consider true cardiac arrest safe. The Oostein Scale here, you can see unwitness cardiac arrest, we were at four point five percent. Oostein meaning that the arrest was witnessed by a bystander and that we were able to arrive and they were in a shockable rhythm that we could reverse. It was thirty-three percent of our calls there of our cardiac arrest. And Oostein bystander intervention, we had forty percent of our calls with some sort of intervention there that we were able to make a difference on. So next slide. In two thousand and twenty-two, we actually saw a tremendous increase in those numbers. Our unwitnessed arrests were eleven point eight percent, so that went up a little bit. Oostein Scale for the witnessed arrest by bystander with without intervention was sixty percent versus the prior year was at forty. And Oostein bystander with some sort of intervention was at seventy-five percent. We had a total of eight patients who walked out of the hospital on their own with a cerebral performance scale, one to two. That was phenomenal. So even though the numbers look small, the percentages was great. In two thousand and twenty-two, proudly, the city of Pasco was the safest out of the entire area to have a cardiac arrest. And that's morbid, but it's a stat that we're proud of. We were we were the safest that year. So and we continue to train so that we can maintain that status as well. We want all of our citizens and our visitors to have the best chance of survival should they encounter cardiac arrest. Next slide. So how do we get there? How do we improve our Oostein Scale, which really is imperative that we have community members identifying CPR early on and providing some sort of intervention? Community risk reduction, we believe, is one of the biggest contributors to those numbers. We can see our CRR personnel bench here. We do a lot of events in the community. We're teaching hands-on CPR continuously. We just did it at the track this last weekend and it's fun. We get the families involved, get the kids involved. They're out there learning how to pump on the chest. And really, our goal is to get them comfortable. Once they recognize that there is a cardiac arrest, that they can actually help and make a difference there. So we also use technology. There's an app out there called Pulse Point right now. It's continuously updated. It lets people know if there is a cardiac arrest near them. It lets them know where AEDs are throughout the city so that if they feel comfortable, they can get involved and they can help initiate the chain of survival there, which we'll talk about later. AED placements throughout the city. We've been strategically trying to get our AEDs in high occupancy and high or high occupancy areas, sorry. It's been a late day, a long day, and gathering locations. So parks, swimming pool has one. Just recently worked with our internal health and safety specialists with the city. We've acquired three additional AEDs for City Hall here. They've all been placed in service with stop-the-bleed kits right beside them. So and we completed training for twenty-two of our city employees here to be able to use an AED and provide CPR if something should happen in City Hall. So we're continuously working together, trying to find better locations in the city where we can make those AEDs accessible. And then our communication center, we call CCOM, they provide excellent telephonic CPR instructions for when you do call CPR. If you're comfortable getting involved and providing those compressions, they're going to walk you right through it. They also have a computer AED dispatch, so it gets us to the calls quickly and we know what's going on. So there's notes and everything that come out well ahead of time. We know exactly what's going on. If there's somebody on scene administering CPR, and it really helps us to get a picture painted before we get there. So they do a great job helping us out as well. Next slide. So some of the things that we do when we arrive on scene, we are an advanced life support agency, which means that we can provide procedures that do not differ a whole lot from what you're going to see in the hospital on a cardiac arrest. We really are a mobile intensive care unit when the ambulance arrives on scene. So things that we do, we provide an airway for oxygen administration. We know the oxygen needs to be circulated through the blood, needs to get up to the brain, and we do that by providing a advanced airway. That's that tube that we stick down people so that you sometimes see on TV. Electrocardiogram, we have our big box monitor, which we'll show you here in a little bit, lets us know what the heart's doing. We're able to read and treat based on what we're seeing on the on the monitor. Defibrillation capabilities, a lot of times when somebody's in CPR, they're having a heart attack, the heart hasn't quite stopped yet. It's still relieving electrical impulses, it's just confused. So we'll send a shock to it, reset it, and we will do that hopefully continuously until we get some sort of recovery and the heart maintains a stable beat after that. Medication administration, we carry a lot of medications that are advanced level. They are current with AHA guidelines and standards. We review them frequently and make sure that they're administered in a timely manner when they're supposed to be to reverse the cardiac arrest. We put our heads together when we try and find reversible causes. Cardiac arrest can happen from various different issues with the patient. We know that there's the overdose issues. We know the people's physical states. So obesity causes heart attacks and and underlying health conditions and stuff like that. So we're continuously trying to figure out what the cause of the cardiac arrest was on scene and come up with a game plan on how to fix it. And then we make our phone calls to the appropriate facilities. We have three hospitals in the Tri-Cities, which we transport to, all of which have differing capabilities on how they can handle and mitigate a cardiac arrest. Cadillac is our go-to hospital. They have best capabilities for catheterization services for a heart that needs a vessel that's opened up. We work with Lord's frequently. They're actually trying to establish a cardiac program themselves right now. And hopefully in the near future, they should be up and running and working on a cath lab. It's not going to be soon, but our goal would be to get them to the closest hospital available. And if Lord's could accomplish that, that would help us out tremendously. But we have sometimes long transport times over to Cadillac and it really means our crews have to shine a little bit longer to get the patients over there and do well. But next slide, please. Protocols. We have some of the most aggressive protocols we're going to find in the country. Washington is known to be very, very aggressive with our protocols. EMS, you know, grassroots started in the state of Washington with King County. In this region, our medical program director, Dr. Hodges, takes a lot of pride in making sure that we go above and beyond even what the AHA recommends. They're reviewed every two years. We're in a current review process right now. And we just want to make sure that we're up to date with the current science, which is always being evaluated. They're developed in accordance with the current science and when they're released, all of our providers have to go through some level of training, make sure that they are qualified and that they understand the protocols. And we do a lot of training to make sure that everybody understands and we'll show our mannequin later on in how we train and and have some fun with it. So next slide. So the equipment, some of the equipment that we use is demonstrated here. We have video laryngoscopes, which helps us go in and monitor and take a look at the airway for passing an advanced airway. You can see the monitor off to the side. We use a lot of medications, the automatic compression device that you'll see down below. We have specialized IV placement, we interosseous placement through, we can deliver fluid administration through. And it all comes into place, all very, very necessary for a positive outcome on a cardiac arrest. Next slide. So the equipment and consumables, we have the greatest equipment that you can possibly ask for and the consumables that we go through, like I said, it's all up to And the consumables that we go through, like I said, it's all up to date with current scientific standards. But how do we maintain that? How do we maximize the life of our equipment? We have maintenance plans to make sure that our equipment's always up to date. So when we do go out on a call, we don't encounter, hopefully. Experiences where the equipment fails, the medications aren't up to date. And so there's always a plan in place to make sure that that's taken care of. We have close relationships with our vendors to meet the needs of our department. So when we go out on a cardiac arrest, we are well resourced. Fiscally responsible budget requests on the on the. Equipment. So some of this equipment's very, very expensive, and we'll. Talk about how we go through some of the. Return on investment on the equipment here in a second. But we wanna make sure that we're resourcing the department appropriately, but most efficient way with the funds of the citizens. So your operational budget for EMS is right around twelve million dollars. And what that covers is your personnel, your vehicles, buildings, and equipment, medications. What we're looking at always is what you get on that return for your investment. There's been a question that's circulated for years on what it actually costs to operate on a cardiac arrest. What does it cost an agency on average? And there's been a whole bunch of studies done. And it's hard to determine. There's differing labor costs. There's differing equipment that's used on a cardiac arrest. You can have a cardiac arrest that's mitigated within one round. You can spend forty minutes on there and you expend a whole bunch of money on some different medications. But on average, you're looking at about nine thousand dollars in pre-hospital setting for a cardiac arrest. That's what the agency costs. Next slide. So the return on investment, what we are always looking to do is find out what the return on investment is. So, we understand the role of government. We need to provide resources and support to those who can't otherwise do it for themselves. But there's gotta be a return, and your job is representative to your constituents is to go back and say that we're spending the money efficiently and effectively. The question has been around for a while on what the, how do we properly evaluate a return on investment? FEMA had a calculator at some point, a whole bunch of smart people in a think tank that said, hey, what is the value of a human life? And, you know, we have these national incidences, tragedies, and they're trying to figure out compensations. And the number that they came up with was seven point five million dollars per life, and I have no idea how they arrived with that. It was a study that they did, but seven point five million dollars per life. And what we did this last year was take a look and say, hey, how, what is the return on investment on your twelve million dollars spent for the city of Pasco? It's not just cardiac arrest saves that you're, we're seeing that money's returned on. Where we really make a difference in people's lives also are things like strokes, stummies. So, ST elevation, MIs, otherwise known as heart attacks. Overdose with Narcan administration, people who are overdosing, if they don't have that Narcan given to them, they're most likely going to pass away. Folks who are experiencing hypoglycemia, you can see the numbers right there, without us arriving on scene administering glucose. Those patients have a chance of passing away as well. So those are the highlighted areas, the types of calls that without direct EMS intervention. Could potentially, most likely result in death. There's a total of two hundred and eighty-six calls last year, in which we made a direct impact and saved lives. And if you multiply that out by the seven point five million dollars per life. That the federal government assesses on human life, your return on investment for the city of Pasco is about two point one four billion dollars. With a whole bunch of zeros in there. So while it's, you know, again, morbid to try and say that a human life is only worth seven point five million dollars. There has to be some sort of monetary value that we recognize. And we think that that's a pretty good return on investment for the budget that you you put into our department. Next slide. So what are we doing besides just doing, you know, a great job with our cardiac arrest? We kinda coined the term community firefighting. There's different programs that we are doing as a fire department to make the city safer, recognize the needs through risk assessments. And develop strategies to mitigate those. So. One of the things we're doing right now is trying to develop a heart-safe community, and that is an application process and a recognition or recognition. Of our efforts in getting out into the community, providing that hands-only CPR, giving folks the education needed to. Again, get involved with a cardiac arrest if they need to. So that's a designation that we're really working on with our sister city over in Richland. They've been, they've had that designation for quite a while, and we're really trying to follow in their footsteps. The carry a second dose program, we worked with the health district last year. I think we're well aware of the opioid pandemic that we have going on in the city. We were very, very busy last summer trying to mitigate that problem. So we worked with the health district. They actually got a grant which provided us five hundred packages of Narcan. And it was called carry a second dose. What we would do is on a overdose, if we went out there, made contact, we would leave them a. A kit, a Narcan kit, so hopefully next time, you know, there was some way that they could self-mitigate an overdose. What we found was a lot of people were helping each other out. They were administering their partner or their friend a Narcan dose. And the problem was reversed before we got those there. So while the opioid pandemic is not going away. We are trying to find ways to mitigate that, and we're continuing to work with the health district. Another program that we started that we're pretty proud of is called the Otega program, Otego, and what it is is a. Physical therapy rehab program for our elderly patients in our nursing homes to try and reduce the falls there. Falls for our patients can be drastically, it can drastically change their lives, especially in our elderly. So we have one of our firefighters who works closely with our nursing homes to provide that service as well. We have our resource navigators, which you guys are all well aware of. They are continuously. Contacting our patients who require our assistance and our service quite a bit more and trying to find resources for them. So that they don't need to call quite as often, and they have more appropriate resources that would best fit their needs. Behavioral health assistance, so we have our internal behavioral health caseworker. Who does a fantastic job going out and helping us mitigate some of the problems we see with mental health in the community. Additional A E Ds, stop the bleed kits, we talked about that earlier. We're placing more. We actually just purchased three more, which will be additionally placed in the city. And offering continuous staff education with that as well. So I talked about the chain of survival earlier, and I look at it more as a vertical scale here. And it really starts with yourselves, the city council. On having a vision on the services, the emergency medical services that you wanna deliver to the citizens of Pasco. Your vision and the service delivery that you want to provide is in. Directed down to the city manager, who talks to the department directors, down to the fire department or fire chief. It involves our aggressive protocols, our EMS and hospital collaborative efforts that we continuously are working on. Down to our paramedics who are available, or E M Ts and paramedics who are available twenty-four seven. And the community involvement as well with all the education we're doing. And that works its way all the way down to the end user and the citizens. So, we definitely couldn't do it without our departments and the help. It is a group effort. We hear the phrase, it takes a village, and it really does. So. You know, our I T department definitely helps us make sure that we have the technology available for to communicate. That our mobile data trans or M D Ts are working, and we can figure out how to get to the calls in a timely manner. Our building department makes sure that our, the codes are up to par. And that we have rooms to get our stretchers in and out of the buildings as needed, and the buildings are safe. Parks and Recs, you know, they make sure that we have access in and out so that we can locate patients and remove them and get them treated in a timely manner. Our facilities, make sure that our buildings can adequately house our apparatus and our personnel. Finance does a great job making sure that we have the budget to resource our department and that we can continue to provide the services we can with the. With the money afforded to us. Public Works, they make sure that our streets are safe and that we can get our fire apparatus in and out. H R helps us with the hiring process and make sure that our folks have the resources that they need to stay safe. And continue to operate in a healthy manner. City shops, by all means, everybody knows that we keep them very, very busy. Our apparatus. Will go from sitting in a garage to happening to go down the road at near full speed. You know, to get that five-minute timeline and hopefully make a difference there. So we keep city shops pretty busy as well. Economic growth and development, you know, with the expansion of the city, we make sure and that department makes sure that we expand our services proportionally as well. Police department, can't say enough about them. They're succinct with us on most of our calls. Cardiac arrest, they're always there. Most of the time, they are actually there before we arrive. They recognize a lot of times the opioid overdoses right now. They carry with them Narcan. And usually are administering that Narcan well ahead of our arrival. On a cardiac arrest, they're usually sometimes the first people on the door, and they're the first ones on the chest, and they do a great job. We do annual training with them, and they, I can't say enough about the. Them being a resource to us on scene as well. So, and they really do keep the scene safe. Some of these cardiac arrests, you really never know what you're going into. So we really appreciate their efforts and helping us out. So, it really is a interconnected network. It's of a team effort, basically, with our departments. And that's how we are able to successfully provide the services to help out with the, with our patients in need. So, but I wanna recognize the council tonight before we go onto our demonstration. Again, we couldn't do this without your assistance. So our adopted mission statement is honorably protect and serve. And we really can't do that without your vision, without your direction, without you resourcing our department appropriately. And getting the feedback from the citizens on what they wanna see. What we do annually is we recognize our providers who have successfully run through a cardiac arrest and have a patient. That had a CP one or two on a good patient outcome. And we present them with a coin. It's a cardiac arrest safe coin. What I'd like to do tonight is present you all with a coin as being the first in line of the chain of survival. And just thank you for your efforts and your vision. And then we're gonna get into the fun part, which is our demonstration. So. Continue working with you and making sure that our service delivery is in line with what your expectations are for the city. So, with that, we have a group of folks back here who are pretty excited to demonstrate what we actually do out on the streets, and that's the fun part. So, we have our, what we call Ambu Man, who's gonna come up and go unconscious on us and ready to go. Let's bring him out here. And we actually have a member on the council, Mr. Mayor, who is a graduate of a program that we call Fire Ops. And what Fire Ops is, it's a platform that we bring our policymakers into. A one-day experience of living in the life of a firefighter. So where you get to put on your gear, you get to go through a cardiac arrest. You get to put out fires, and every year we try and. Every year we offer that to one or two of our council members, and you'll see that offer come out here soon. So. Reason I point that out is because I'm gonna have the mayor come down here and show how we start early recognition. And notification of our dispatcher that we have a CPR in progress. So, Mr. Mayor just happens to be walking along the street here and sees Ambu Man down on the ground unconscious and unresponsive. So the first thing that we are hoping that our citizens do is recognize it. There's no breathing, there's no pulse, and to immediately start compressions. And hopefully, there's somebody around. Mr. Milney also is a graduate of our Fire Ops program. Hey, Mr. Milney, can you reach out and call nine-one-one? And we'll have some compressions going on. Mr. Mayor, if you wanna demonstrate that? Fantastic. And Mr. Milney's going to call nine-one-one and activate the nine-one-one system, which is gonna go into our dispatch. Our dispatch is going to notify our first responders that we have a cardiac arrest in progress. It's gonna come up on our M D T in our notes, and shortly after that, here comes our crews. So on a cardiac arrest, we arrive with six personnel. The first person that is going to be through the door, we call the scout, and they're gonna come in and confirm that there is a cardiac arrest in progress. Every person who comes in the door with every piece of equipment is pre-assigned. And we do this to make sure that every movement that we have is the most efficient possible. We know that time is of essence. And every movement has to be calculated. So what we're gonna demonstrate right now is what we call the PIT concept. And it's much like NASCAR in the fact that every, every movement, every twist, every turn is calculated, and it's for a specific purpose. So all the equipment has arrived on scene. We're going to establish a person who's leading the call, which is going to be Lennon right here. We have compressions continuously going. We never wanna be off the chest on compressions for more than eight seconds. Once we have the complement of our team, the roles of the cardiac arrest are going to be fulfilled. So our team leader is going to assign the roles. We're going to establish an IV. We're gonna establish a heart monitor, place that on the patient, and look and see what rhythm that patient's in and if they're in a shockable rhythm. So you can see we're providing oxygen to the patient immediately, so we have oxygen circulating in the blood with our compressions. The battalion chief usually arrives on scene, and they're gonna be the timekeeper. The countdown is monumentally important. That makes sure that we are off the chest for as little amount of time as possible. The monitor is charged before the countdown hits zero, so that we can recognize within ten seconds whether or not that patient needs a shock or not. Monitor takes about fifteen seconds to charge, so we wanna make sure that that's ready to go before we, before we assess the rhythm. Now, the apparatus that you're seeing being placed on the chest right now, it's called a Lucius. It's a automatic compression device. And what that device does is it makes sure that we have continuous good compressions throughout the remainder of the event here. It takes over manual efforts. Manual efforts are great, but they, we're human. We tire out after about two minutes. And what this machine does is it makes sure that throughout the code for forty-five minutes, fifty minutes, an hour. That the compression rate is continuous and constant, and that the depth and rate are adequate. You can see that an advanced airway was placed in here, and that's really going to secure oxygen delivery. So that we can circulate and keep the brain functioning. Now, after the initial part of the, what we call a code, is complete, and we have assignments made. Medications are being administered according to A H A timeline. We also are coming up with a plan on how to remove the patient, hopefully after they've regained a heart rate. You can see our team is constantly communicating on who's going to be doing the next procedure. Okay, and it's that fast. We recognize that a shock needs to be delivered. The monitor was charged, a shock was delivered. And we immediately resumed compressions with our automatic device. Now, each round lasts for two minutes, and while that doesn't seem like very long, it does go by pretty quick when we're trying to get some of these interventions. So one of the struggles that we have sometimes is after we've recovered a heart rate. Is getting the patient out of the house, into the back of the ambulance, and getting going to the hospital. Some of these patients are upstairs on second or on the top story. We have to get them all the way down the stairs onto a cot, which is outside. And so we have things to move them. This is gonna be called a slot stretcher. And you can see the reason why we need so many people on scene. There's a lot of tasks that need to be completed. But in the event that we do recapture a heartbeat, we wanna make sure that we have enough manpower to get them out of the house without. But in the event that we do recapture a heartbeat, we want to make sure that we have enough manpower to get them out of the house without, number one, harming them, harming the responders, or interrupting a, the cardiac arrest efforts. Okay, as you can see, they're continuing to communicate throughout all the procedures, especially when we're about to move a patient onto a stretcher. All the equipment needs to stay in place. Okay, as you can see, heart rate's been regained. That's the goal. Now we have to go through the process of getting the patient loaded, getting them out of the house, and going to the appropriate facility. So when they're moving them out, one important role that wasn't identified here tonight, and I really tried to get the chaplain here. But we, we do have a chaplain who responds with us to our cardiac arrests. It is monumentally important, a role. They, they come. It is a hectic scene, especially for a family member who potentially have just lost one of their loved ones. So they come and they make that first interaction with them, try and find some comfort for them, and resource them appropriately if needed. And, and, and really just try and start that healing process with them. And reassure them of what's going on with our providers, where they're going, should, hopefully the heart rate comes back. And after the call, they make sure that responders are doing well as, as well. Some of these calls are very, very traumatic on the responders and they're always there to help us out and make sure that our mental health and our, our well-being is taken care of as well. So couldn't get the chaplain here tonight, but they are a very big part of our team and our success, so. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions on what we are doing in our service. Hopefully that was a fun little demonstration, but
Mayor, if I may?
Just a little bit of a glimpse there, so.
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you. How are you all doing? But thank you for everything that you do in the community. I know a lot of the focus that you do is education. I've been to your newer station. I've brought in kids, different groups of kids for education. We've come in with other community, community leaders, again, for that education piece. I just wanna say thank you so much for everything that you do. Your body, your minds are put through so much stress trying to save a life. And by the numbers that you showed us, thank you again. Thank you is just so, so, it sounds so simple to say, but really, thank you so much for all the work that you all do for your team. Thank you for putting yourselves out there and, you know, stressing on your bodies, that, everything that you do. It's, it's, I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, it, it's a, it's a group effort from the entire city. So we, we definitely couldn't do this without everybody's support, input, and, and resources from throughout the, the city administrations.
And just before we go on to someone else, I will do this shameless plug. They do like for people to come in, bring them sandwiches, coffee, pizza, whatever.
Firefighters know how to eat, but yeah.
Yeah, before I move on to Councilmember Blaisdell, I do want to note that there were also a couple of other of your colleagues in the back, both to my right and to my left that didn't participate, but they're here. So, you know, for the whole team, and obviously those who are out at station or, you know, unfortunately on call or whatever the case may be right now, thank you to everything that you're doing. You know, we recognize you too. You, you had the quiet part tonight, but, you know, thank you very much. So with that, Ms. Blaisdell.
That was very intense. I can't imagine what it's like in live motion. So thank you. That kind of opened my eyes. I hope I never have to see that again in real life. But do you guys happen to do CPR training for like businesses or provide that?
We do. We have internal CPR training. We offer a basic CPR all the way up through what we call advanced cardiac life support. That was a resource that we wanted to be able to provide in-house, and we were able to accomplish that last year. So we invite the public to come down. A lot of times, what, what we're really trying to focus on right now is that hands-only CPR. But we do offer certified CPR instruction as well. So, yeah, they're intense calls. And the great part about it is we're seeing a lot of the success rates because of our training. And the work is inexorable, right? It's always gonna be there. The training is monumentally important in how we accomplish these, these numbers that we receive back. As well as the training equipment. The Ambu Man that you just witnessed there, that was a purchase that we made last year. And our, our providers take great advantage of using it. We can run through multiple different scenarios. A great part about that Ambu Man, I'm just gonna put a little plug in right now, is we can take a call, like what you just saw right here, or a call that maybe didn't necessarily go as well as we liked, we can actually recreate it. The technology's there that we can plug that call right back into the Ambu Man and go through it again and again and again. So we're seeing those success rates based on our training, the education of our providers, the aggressive protocols, and the resources that we have based on the councils and the city, so.
And I have one more comment. I went to your guys' grand opening or the firehouse back when in the demonstrations that you guys do, I think really benefit the community, so kudos to that as well.
Yeah, we're very, very happy to do it. Anytime we can interact with the public and, and just really show and highlight what we're doing here at the city of Pasco, especially for emergency response and public safety. It's, it's an honor to be able to do that.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Blaisdell. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, thank you. I've got a couple comments and a question. Is there any, I've always wondered this and seen TV shows. Liability on a random pass try who starts to assist.
Sorry, who starts to assist and, you know, messes something up in one way or another. Is there any liability where the person having that episode could come back? And I know I've heard from people before, I don't want to do anything, get involved and mess something up. Can you speak to that maybe?
Yeah, no, the liability, the, the laws protect citizens when they try and get involved in something like that, and rightfully so. I mean, they're, they're, as long as they're trying to do good, then the liability really shifts away from them. What we're trying to do with that hands-only CPR is decrease what could be perceived as a liability. So really, you, you witness somebody, you notice that they don't have a pulse, that they're not breathing. We're just asking you to make sure that you're pumping on the chest and circulating that blood. So, you know, before we'd have to get involved with trying to provide breaths and, and doing a couple other things that were really recommended, we definitely had some folks who were, you know, uneasy with that and thought that maybe I could, you know, get sued later on if this didn't turn out right by family members. So the simplicity of hands-only CPR and the, the laws definitely do protect folks from, from any sort of civil action, I think.
And then just a couple of comments. One thing that appreciated was, you know, everybody involved in that, they seemed to take it really seriously. I mean, it felt like a real event going on. And I've had the experience with this several times with my youngest son who passed away. Recognize a few of you who were at our house on, I think, five or six different occasions. We had to call nine-one-one. And watching tonight, it was the same demeanor as what happened in our home, very serious. Everybody knew their job, knew their place. The chaplain was there, and even besides that, some of the folks here tonight were comforting us in the meantime. And so, you know, my dad's a police officer, but I do have a soft spot, soft spot for firefighters in our community, so thank you. Thank you all.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. I know it's, appreciate you sharing that, your personal moments. Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Captain Mortensen. That was really, really something to, to see, and I say that in a just really traumatic, kinda just, you know, humble way. I mean, I will go out on a limb and say I'm probably the oldest person here on the council, so that starts, no cancer in my family, but lots of heart disease and stuff. And so, yeah, that, you know, that starts to hit really close to home. And, you know, we didn't interrupt your presentation, but thank you so much. Congratulations on being the safest place in the Tri-Cities to have an event like that, you know? God help us. And I, you know, I just look at just all the effort we put into saving a life there. And yeah, FEMA, as you quoted, said seven and a half million dollars. But really, you just look at the value of a human life and you look at what we as a society and we as a people do to try to preserve and save a human life and all the efforts. And I, it just really speaks to that value of a human life, you know? That, you know, sure, we can put a dollar figure on it, but what does that really mean to us as a society? And so I just commend you guys, and, you know, I think about it from a policy perspective. Speaking of the value of a human life, you know, we talked about Narcan. And, you know, I've, I've got somebody who's close to me who's a Yakima City Fireman. And, you know, they were on the verge of running out of Narcan not too long ago in the past month or two and had to kinda get an emergency shipment. So I know you're facing this a lot more. And, and I know there's users sometimes who will use and they'll have somebody, as you were kinda mentioning, just on standby with the Narcan ready. That is so sad and it just, you know, breaks my heart. And I think about your job, having to really just kinda pick up the pieces of society, as also our police department does too. And when, you know, you're not seeing people on their very best day, you know? And it's just, my heart just goes out to you and your team and, you know, Chief Crowley and everything for, for what you do. And so I just, I commend you guys. And I, you know, as Blant was saying here, Councilwoman, that, you know, thank you doesn't seem to really come, you know? It comes short of what we really need to have, the gratitude we need to express. So kinda rambling now, but yeah, that was really a lot to take in. And from a policy perspective, gives us a lot to think about, you know? Because whether it's, you know, somebody having a cardiac event or somebody who is making the kinda decisions that put themselves into a place, you know, with a Narcan event, it's all human lives. And so anyways, thank you.
We, we truly appreciate those statements and those sentiments. And you can see, you know, our folks back there, it's a privilege to be able to speak for, for my providers right now. I'm proud of them. But you can see just the passion that they put into protecting our citizens and making sure that they have their resources available on their worst day. Remember a few years ago, we coined the phrase hashtag Pasco Proud. And I'll never forget Mayor Serrano wearing that shirt in the council. And we really took off with that. We believe what we're doing for the citizens of Pasco. We want to make sure that they feel safe in the community. And if something does happen, they want, we want them to know that we have the resources available to come out and help them on their worst day, at their worst time. So we appreciate the understanding. When Chief Crowley comes and, and says, hey, you know, we need a couple more resources here and there, we're hoping that we can demonstrate that there's, you know, that need is, is beneficial and that we're doing it just for the, you know, for the benefit of the citizens here. And, you know, we're doing the best we can to be efficient with the dollars. And we understand your responsibility as council members too. But I think we are all working collaboratively to try and make the, you know, the city as, as safe as possible, so.
I appreciate all the kind words. Absolutely. Thank you. And Mayor, with that, Melanie.
Thank you. Really appreciate the demonstration. I can say that eleven years ago, you guys, my daughter was trying to run across the street on Court Street and got nailed by a truck and went flying through the air. And I still think about that often, but the response time was amazing. I was actually quite shocked how quickly you guys were there. She ended up being okay. But as a father, it was very heart-wrenching to see your kid go flying and not knowing what's gonna happen. But again, the medical attention that you guys provided, and again, the follow-up with that was very well. So I just want to say thank you. It means a lot to me. She's the one that, now in the Marines, I wear this hat. And again, proud of my family, but very proud of you guys for, for being there. And when the call came, you guys responded immediately. And so it, yeah, it means a lot to our family, so thank you. And then I did another plug. I did love the Fire Ops Day. It was an amazing day. It was quite the shock of all the things that you guys go through. And then even riding the ambulance, I was surprised I didn't get super sick because the guy was just tearing around the cars. And I'm trying to do the pump thing and it was hot in there and it was, it was pretty murderous. But again, I had a great time and it was something I'll never forget, so.
Good. I'm glad it was a good experience. It's, it's a little bit of a workout too. But yeah, we'll be offering that experience to, to council member too this year as well, so.
Thank you. I want to say more, but I'll just say Captain. But no, I, I appreciate it. Councilmember for a host.
Just real quick, one last question. I know you did talk about the Pulse Point. I actually do have it on my phone. But there's another app associated with that. It's called AED. And that mostly tells where AEDs are located throughout the city of Pasco. And there's a short video, and I'm just really talking to community here. There's a short video that walks you through step-by-step on how to use an AED in case you do not know how to use one. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. And we are, when we find more and more AEDs, we're continuously putting them into the apps and stuff like that. One of the things that I'm working on right now is talking to some of our big industry that was coming in and seeing if we can't get some grant money to put some more AEDs throughout the city. It's just, it's very, very important. Get them down to the baseball fields and stuff like that, as many places as we can where we know people congregate. We need to have some sort of AED there, stop the bleed kits, and some things there that we can, we can help mitigate a medical emergency if needed. So we're, we're working to continuously put those resources out in the community.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And certainly, to the extent that we can be of use in applying for grants, advocating for you, we'd certainly, I mean, I'll, I'll speak for myself and I think for everyone else, we support that absolutely. Maybe to the extent that the Ask Pasco app or some of those things can actually be used to connect the AED and some of those other resources that you have available electronically. I don't know, working with IT to see if maybe those hot map type things can be put out there, might be super beneficial. But I'll kind of wrap up, I think, the general sentiment that we are extremely grateful for you. You know, Mr. Milney and Mr. Harpster shared their personal experiences, and I know I've shared mine many times, you know? Twice now, we've brought what is now my five-year-old son to you. And you all, and I, I look around this room and literally, you know, I mean, it's not always the same crew, but I see some of you from those nights. Because of your willingness to respond, not because I'm a council member or the mayor, but because I was somebody seeking help. And, you know, it wasn't like just meet us at Cadlec or go to Lord's and they'll take care of you. You guys jumped right into action, did things that asked the right questions of my wife. I was just the driver, you know? And fortunately, she's smarter than I am and, and you all are too. And you all jumped into action and thank God for you. I have a five-year-old son still because of you, so thank you.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that. It's an honor to be able to provide service. And, and one of the things we pride ourselves on is providing the same service from our least opportune to our most affluent citizens in Pasco. Whoever, whoever is asking for our help is going to get the highest level of treatment and service possible and with the best training, you know, affordable. So it's an honor. It's an honor to be able to serve.
Well, I greatly appreciate that. And thank you all, both sides of the room, for, for being here. We appreciate your work. Just thank you. And we'll keep doing everything we can, Chief, to make sure that your programs are well-funded. And we appreciate your work, so thank you.
Absolutely. Looking forward to giving you guys our twenty twenty-three numbers as soon as we get them. I think we're, we're gonna still be on the right path there, so.
Well, excellent. Thank you very much. You all have a safe night out there, okay?
You will. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, so we can all, you know, circle back to the non-emotional things. Sorry, Ms. Sarah. We're gonna go ahead and take five minutes. It's eight twenty-nine. We'll go till eight thirty-four, take a quick break. And then interim director Sarah will run us through some pretty important, not as exciting things, but they're awesome. Thank you. So with that, five minutes till night eight thirty-four. Alrighty, welcome back. It is now eight thirty-five. Uh, so we took a few extra seconds. We'll move on to item C. Resolution Bid Award for Sylvester Street Safety Improvement Project. It's, uh, listed as interim director Sarah.
Mayor and council members, we are presenting to you a bid award, a recommendation for bid award for the Sylvester Street Safety Improvements Project. And, uh, we will start with an overview of the project scope. This project intends to modify the configuration of the lanes, um, on the Sylvester Street corridor from Third Avenue to the bridge, uh, crossing three ninety-five. And then on the west side of the bridge, right after the bridge, all the way to Road fifty-four. Uh, currently Sylvester Street has four lanes. And, uh, so there's two lanes in each direction. This project will provide for a center turn lane, one lane in each direction and will allow for the construction or striping, depending on which side of the bridge we are, of facilities that are for bi- bicycles and pedestrians. So on the west side of the corridor, we are actually proposing to build sidewalks and a multi-use pathway. And on the west side, oh, sorry, on the east side where sidewalks already exist, the roadway will be restriped to include bike lanes. Along with these improvements, there are some pedestrian crossings planned for the west side of the corridor in three key locations. And those will be with activated, uh, ra- rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Um, and I must mention that although there is a gap in this project, which is the overpass, it's not included in this project. There is a companion project that is upcoming and we have received funds to begin design immediately. So hopefully we'll have the whole corridor addressed for multimodal transportation here in the near future. Okay, so these are the, uh, configurations of existing in each side of the corridor, east and west, and then, uh, proposed. And it's basically what I explained. And I want to advance to the next slide, which I think it's easier to understand what is the proposed configuration on either side of the corridor. So you're seeing first the west side where, uh, overlapping with an existing picture of the corridor, you're seeing what is proposed to be done. Uh, in yellow are the through lanes, those lanes that allow for travel in each direction, then a center turn lane, a bike path, uh, pedestrian and bike paths or multi-use paths on the south side and new sidewalks on the north side. And then when we look at the east, uh, segment of the corridor, it's really the restriping that allows for both bike lanes and the center turn lane. Um, and of course the sidewalks are already existing there. Okay, we would like to review with you what our outreach plan has been and is going to be onward. Um, so through the design process of the project, we have, um, held two open houses, one in fall of twenty twenty-two and one in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Those were advertised through, uh, traditional media and, uh, newspaper advertisement and social media. Um, we also have a project web, webpage where there are updates of the project. The information on the project is both in Spanish and in English. Um, the, um, property owners were notified of upcoming, the upcoming projects through, uh, direct mailings. And we also communicated follow-up information from those open houses through direct mailings. Um, we did not send notices to the neighboring community. And we have received some feedback on that. So our plan onward includes also communicating with the neighboring, um, property owners. Um, and then of course there were direct coordination with those property owners that had any modifications proposed to their driveways as part of the project. This project focuses on safety. So, uh, we had to take into consideration what configurations of driveways were appropriate to allow for the fa- for the safe, uh, transportation of all modes of transportation through that corridor. Okay, so that is in the past. So now upcoming, um, now with the presentation to council and the anticipated bid award, we propose to send postcards to property owners along the corridor and the neighbors, those that use that corridor regularly but are not living on the corridor. Uh, along with that, there will be a social media campaign and traditional media trying to advertise the upcoming project, anticipated disruption to traffic and just overall notification of what is the intent of the project, the purpose, the reasoning, the funding, et cetera. And for example, these are the type of, um, visual, uh, documents we're preparing to, uh, send to, um, to, um, our, our community so that the information is provided in a way that is understandable and concise and, and overall just providing all the details without, uh, drowning people in details. Okay? So upon construction commencement, so as soon as we have the contractor onboard and, uh, ready to commence with some dates, uh, more clearly established, uh, there are requirements for our contractors to provide notices to the residents along the corridor. And that includes the door hangers that, where there is a contact information from the contractor in case property owner has any question on the advancement of the project or any concerns. Um, additionally, there, there's notice to utilities and service providers, uh, who, um, obviously will need to know what's happening in the corridor, allow them for any adjustment of their own utilities or any work that can be made more efficient while our project is occurring. Um, and of course, if there is disruption in, in the street, a change in, in, uh, traffic, uh, it's important, for example, for school buses to be aware of that change, emergency services, as well as, um, garbage, um, pickup. Um, along with that, also coordination for property owners on specific local access. Um, we, we do not anticipate closure of Sylvester during the work, but definitely there will be changes in lanes and allowing everybody to access their own home at the end of the day, uh, or the businesses having their driveways open. So any disruption will be coordinated with those property owners with at least forty-eight hours, um, advanced notice. Although, uh, overall traffic provisions are provided to the city for approval, um, with at least one week notice, which allows us to do a mass, um, communication to the media and of course, emergency services. Okay, with that, um, the engineer's estimate for this project was three point nine million dollars. I'm rounding, uh, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder was, uh, Grant Construction at three point two million dollars. And again, I'm rounding. Um, the bids were advertised, we received three bids in total. The lowest, uh, apparent lowest bidder actually was deemed non-responsive due to lack of documentation and some errors in, uh, some of the, uh, required documentation. Um, we also received two protests, which have been addressed and responded to. And ultimately the, our recommendation for a word for Granite, what received concurrence from Department of Transportation, which is important in this project because as I'm showing in the slides, this project has both federal and state funding, uh, which requires us to follow Washington rules and receive their concurrence on the, on the steps, on every step of the project. Um, there's a summary of the funds received. This is total funding for the project, so includes design, right away, construction. Um, so overall, this is a four point nine million dollar project. Our bids were good bids. Um, and we recommend, um, a, award to Granite Construction. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, uh, Director Sarah. Mayor Potem, Melanie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, other question. So, you know, along the, the bike trails that go along the, the Columbia and then of course the bike path starts at, uh, looks like Road fifty-four, is there gonna be, uh, lanes to connect them? So that people are turning with their boats? I assume that's the, the same area where people park their boats. Is there actually lanes?
We have, we have, um, evaluated a, uh, potential striping. The project does not include this cor- this connection point just because of limits on our environmental process for the federal funding. Uh, yet there, it, this is a simple solution that we plan to implement as soon as this project is finished and be able to connect the two.
Okay, appreciate that. And then of course you have the, the rapid flashing beacons. Um, is there also gonna be like any extra lighting? Cause I actually do go down Sylvester every day and I know it's on a bike. A lot of times it can be pretty dark. Um, and if people are, you know, riding a bike at nighttime or whatever, is there any plans or is, I didn't see that in there? Is anything to address the, the issue of people walking and, um, with lighting at all?
I believe that there is lighting, but I would have to circle back and add that in the packet for next week to ensure I'm giving you the right answer.
Okay, okay. Appreciate a follow-up on that. And then also the last question. I know when you look at, uh, what it is now, then you look at Sylvester, um, it has the part where it shows the two lanes, the center lane. And of course, on the north side is a sidewalk, on the south side is the, the bike and pathway. And there's like a dip. Is that just actually an artist saying that there's what it should be? Cause obviously if cars were pulling out on the south side of the street, you wouldn't want to go down and dip. Or can you explain, is that just an artist rendition or is that actually gonna happen?
I'm gonna go back to the slide.
Yes. Yeah, at the bottom there, to the left, the bottom.
Okay, so the, the configuration along the corridor includes that dip, actually it helps with some stormwater management. Yet where there are driveways, um, we overcome that by having just the level, um, set up. And there is of course a culvert or something along those lines under it.
Okay. Okay. Well, just to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millie, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, mine are more comments and questions. I was the council member who asked staff all the questions leading up to this. And I gotta tell you, I've went back and forth on this a lot. We had a guy going through our neighborhood with a petition, trying, trying to fight this. And I looked at it and thought about it and it, you know, it first, especially, you know, west of, um, kind of the corridor I, I live in, at least one where council member lives on it, um, you know, I, I'm a car driver. I like to get out there and drive, but at the same time, one of the biggest issues that we have affecting this city is out of control speeding. And, you know, I guess part of it, I came to the conclusion, you know, in a sense, we can't have it both ways. We can't have people ripping up and down Sylvester at night, very loud vehicles, very fast vehicles and not give any, um, any of these, you know, speeding mitigations an opportunity to. And so, um, you know, I, I've kind of went back a little bit. I mean, I, I hate to give up drive, driving lanes at the same time. But, um, this is, you know, pr- probably the best thing, especially in the residential areas. And I get it, you know, it becomes kind of that connection to the downtown. And you, you get east of the three ninety-five and some of it's mixed commercial, mist- mixed housing. And then, you know, all commercial and we can't go back and forth. And so, um, you know, obviously staff has put a lot of work into this over the last couple of years. And obviously the, the leadership, the council's put into it and everything. And I even had a young man, since he, he is in high school, I'll just say his initials since he has a very kind of unusual first name. And, um, his initials are MC though. And he was talking about getting hit on that bridge, you know? Um, he said there was one night, um, on the three ninety-five there that four, he said he nearly got hit four times. And it really does bottleneck there. And so I am glad that we do have a future, you know, mitigation looking at that. But, you know, at the same time, this is super important, but you know, three million dollars, I look at some of the other emergencies. I would almost call them traffic emergencies, you know, throughout the city, whether it be Court and sixty-eight that's gonna be addressed soon and some of the others in West Pasco. And it's just a reminder that, you know, we have a lot of needs in this city. And, you know, some may look at this and say, well, don't we have, you know, bigger things to do? But this is an important corridor for safety. This is one of three east-west, you know, main arterials we have that crosses the city between Court. Court and Argent, and that's really the three that cross the three ninety five and go, so this is um really important. So anyways, um you know, if if we were putting it all together, it may end up being a little bit different. But um you know, I look forward to, not the traffic, it's kinda like buying a boat, you know, the the worst day. And the best day when it's finally gone or done, but um yeah, this is probably, you know, the the right direction for us to go. So thank you. Um interim directors Sarah and the rest of staff who've been in on this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Harpser.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Sarah. Um first question, is there any concern with? The engineer estimate being three point nine million and granite coming in at three point two, while the other non-responsive bidder was uh three point six?
Actually, we had a non-responsive bidder that was three point one, and then we had another bid that was three point six. So um we have reviewed the bits, we actually had our design in engineer of record uh review them as well. And we did not find any items of concern. Um they were just very efficient with how they planned to do the work, so so we we are not concerned at this point.
Okay, um and then second question, there's several dozen homes that front Sylvester. And some of them, guy in my street, he's got a driveway on our street, but also Sylvester. And we were talking about, he said, yeah, I'll just have to use this driveway and they'll eliminate this one. What about those homes that only access from Sylvester?
So those uh homes that had a single access off of Sylvester are maintaining their access. It may have been reconfigured to uh comply with city standards on the width of the driveway. To allow basically for a single, single vehicle in each direction to move. So the maximum, I believe, is in the order of like forty feet or something like that. Um which allows for safe crossing of that driveway by pedestrians and bicycles. So that you can see if somebody's coming out or, you know, backing into uh out of their driveway. And not get hit if there is more than one vehicle mo- making movements.
Okay, thank you. And then um just a few comments, I'm just super excited for this. And um we live in this area and I've mentioned before, I'm a cyclist and I don't mind riding in traffic, I can go fast. But you know, I like to take my kids with me and cannot do that on Sylvester. And um because of the way that the road is designed, with two lanes on each side, no turn lane in the middle. And from west of three ninety five all the way to road sixty, no stop signs or streetlights, it's very dangerous. And um yeah, lots of racing and whatnot. And so um this, the the new design makes me think of Sandifer where it, you know, it's impossible to. You could speed, but it's impossible to race with the design of it. And so I like that, like that there's gonna be um one more walkability. And um cycling opportunities and then the cro- the pedestrian path going from uh west of three ninety five to east of three ninety five is super important. There's um a lot of times like this evening, coming to City Hall, it's dark and there was somebody crossing on the sidewalk. That's, you know, a foot and a half wide and um they don't have any other option. Or if they did, they probably wouldn't be crossing, cause it's just so dangerous. So really excited to um see this happening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harpser, Ms. Barrahs.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just real quick, um you partially answered the question in regards to the other bidders. Are you able to share what the reasons are for the opposition?
I believe so, as long as.
Go ahead, sorry, answer the question again.
The reasons uh for the opposition from that other bidder.
So why they were not. I I think the question is why these particular bidders were deemed non-responsive.
Uh well, the Ms. Sarah can talk about the specifics of it, but uh the long short of it is, what it really came down to is uh there were certain things that were mandatory, that were required. That were not in the non-responsive uh but then the other one had a minor error and it was a, we were allowed, it was a may versus a shall. It's what it really came down to, so and Department of Transportation, uh Washington Department of Transportation uh was very helpful. Uh in making sure that it was clear what was required.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Nope, no problem, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Barrahs, Ms. Barrahs.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um I I just had concerns in regards to, we only see um rapid flashing beacons on the west side. You know, um it I I don't know, I kinda feel like there's a lot of people and I do drive down Sylvester quite a bit on football games. Um as to why we don't have any rapid flashing beacons on the east side, especially when we're promoting walkability to the downtown and stuff. And so I I mean, if we had four point nine million dollars in funding, it seems like we have probably some money to perhaps. Put some beacons on the other side.
Yes, I can address that. So the difference between the east side and the west side is the west side has no signals. There are no signalized intersections at all. On the east side, there are several signalized intersections throughout the corridor, which allow for uh. A uh manually activated um pedestrian crossings with audible notices and so on. So there was not a clear need for those crossings on the east side of the corridor. Where the west side was really deprived of any potential for the residential area north of Sylvester to cross to the south. Even to access, for example, the facilities that are along the river. Which uh now this three crossings which have been identified based on a heat map. Um that shows both pedestrian and bicycle activity within our uh city roads. I think it's wider than our roads, but we use it within our roads, uh identify the three locations that were most used. And of course, they somewhat tied to access to the river eventually.
Okay, um thank you, and I and seeing no further comments, um I appreciate staff's work on this. You know, I I kinda sit with Mr. Harpsor where, you know, it sounded like his initial comment was. We hate to try, lose travel lanes, but at the same time, we have to have travel lanes for everyone and be safe. Um I guess the one question I have is uh this west of three ninety five, the conceptual where it's two lanes. One lane either way and the center lane, is there any safety concern with that center turn lane? I know sometimes those are really beneficial and sometimes they're not.
So actually, the center turn lane in this case is to the benefit of the increase of safety. The funding received specifically from the feds um addresses. That is uh funding based on crashes. So um we we are able to allow for a safe space for vehicles taking a left turn. To stop and wait until there is an appropriate gap. And they only need to worry about crossing one single lane of traffic opposing direction. Uh versus what happens now, which is uh drivers are stopping in a through lane, waiting for an appropriate gap. But yet, when there is a lot of traffic, it becomes the peer pressure, right, to take your left turn quick. Um and so they're finding an appropriate gap likely on the first lane. But they are disregarding what happens with the next lane that they have to cross, because they're crossing two lanes of traffic. And so a lot of the patterns that we noticed on those serious crashes had to do with um T-type uh collisions, right? Where there is that second lane that catches people crossing on their, wh- while they're taking their left turns. So this really increases the the safety, that's the intent.
Okay, I I appreciate that explanation again, especially with loss of vehicle travel lanes. Um knowing that there's an opportunity for safety captured here, as well as safety for pedestrian and bicycle. Um that's, it's always positive to hear and especially when it's primarily funded from outside sources. Um seeing no further comments, we will move on to item D, resolution, professional services agreement for services. Martin Luther King Community Center remodel and expansion project, and it looks like staying with you, Ms. Sarah.
Actually, we will start with Director Rice and then I'll take on the very last couple of slides.
Yeah, after the fire department presentation, we figured we'd better lighten this up a little bit, I'm gonna have to pick up my game here, so. But yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh this evening, uh myself and interim director Sarah. Here to seek your approval to enter into a professional services agreement. Uh which should include architectural services, including outreach design and permitting for the Martin Luther King Community Center remodel and expansion. Uh I'm gonna review some of the current Martin Luther King building uh status and programs. And then I will ship it back over to uh interim director Sarah, so she can handle the uh technical side of that, so. Uh again, Martin Luther King Center, okay, located over on the east side, it's been considered the east side community center. Um uh it's adjacent to or in Kersman Park alongside um the uh Kersman Police Mini Station, ball fields, playgrounds and the school. Uh it was constructed in nineteen seventy, um so it's just gone on uh over fifty years old now. Uh still active actively used though, uh early two thousands, weaving life together art murals installed. It reflects the happenings of the east side of, east side of Pasco and covers history over time. Uh it's a safe location for area youth to recreate and be involved, uh originally called the East Pasco Neighborhood Center. Um here's some interior pictures, it is a dated and aged building, uh it was probably really cool. The designer was probably really impressed with himself in the seventies when they came up with the design, but uh here we are today, so. Um it it is a heavy used facility though, uh includes our after Y C M Y M C after-school program with their game room. Uh here's one of the, one of the hallways and then that that connects both that game room and the gymnasium. Um again, from the outside view, it has a really cool internal courtyard, but from looking at the outside, you see it's it's blocky, no windows really facing the outside. It is dated and aged, hard to find entrances. Um uh the primary gym entrance is actually date way down around along the side behind the tree there. So definitely lacking in appearance and accessibility. Um current services, uh current activities, uh Y Y M C A programs, uh we have Head Start preschool. Uh heavily used for indoor use and adult soccer, um most every evening, Saturday, Sunday, open to close, uh morning to night. Uh also features drop-in basketball and is a community hub. Um it serves historically disadvantaged communities, um whi- which are all culturally diverse from that area. And a hundred percent of the neighborhood elementary school student body is on free reduced lunches in that area. Um our partners, of course, right now are Y M C A, the Great Tri Cities, doing the uh after-school programs, Benton Franklin Head Start and of course us, so. Um it is a fifty-year-old plus facility, um it's had periodic maintenance and minimal updates over time. Um it does not meet the needs of the community, uh and for sure does not have current ADA standards. Uh the gymnasium is a good example where there is no ability to get down to that gymnasium in a wheelchair or otherwise. So unless you roll around to the outside and come in the back door, so. Um so uh the community has uh spoken, we've reached out, we've talked, reviewed what needs it uh on a, on a, as a starting point. But the community'd like to see a new meeting space, including a wet classroom kitchen, of course, updated ADA access. Excuse me, uh potentially mid-Columbia library system mini branch, uh with study homework air and program areas. Uh additional high-speed internet to support those programs, uh facade improvements, including a new entryway. And office space to allow for a community resource officer to locate from the current building they're in over to be more active in that area. Um currently, we've uh received funding from several uh several sources. We have just this year received a three million dollar uh federal grant, which needs to be spent by twenty thirty. Um we still have some ARPA funding that was put in reserve for this project, two million dollars, and those need to be obligated by the end of this year. And I wanna say spent by twenty twenty-six, but uh Director Buckley can correct me then. And then we have state funding, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which needs to be spent by twenty twenty-seven so far. So uh for a total of five point nine million dollars to go towards this project. Um and at this point, I'll turn it over for the technical side, and if you have any questions from either side at the end, I can come back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rice. And with that, we um had identified the scope of work that we wanted to perform. We advertised a request for qualifications, which is the standard state mandated process. To select professional services from architects, engineers, surveyors. Where the selection process is based on their qualifications only. It does not include any consideration of potential cost or price for those services. We're really looking at their experience, their qualification, their team, their expertise. With that, um we received five statement of qualifications from different architectural firms. And they had a whole team of uh engineers, surveyors, geotech and other people in their teams. Um we evaluated those, there was a committee that performed their reviews, it was a mixed committee between different. Um agencies, actually, it was not only Pasco uh staff members. But also some external uh stakeholders that use that facility currently. Um and the the process for those consultants to submit their statement of qualifications included. A site visit so that they could understand and interpret what were their proposals for uh that facility. And and what were the shortcomings and the opportunities that were there. Um and eventually, we shortlisted two of those five uh for in-person interviews. And we had a good interviews with presentations and questions, answers. And ultimately, we found uh Architects West to be our preferred. Um architectural firm to provide services for this project. Uh we had a focus on uh community outreach experience, of course, experience doing facilities of this kind. And facilities that really respond to the needs of a community and that are able to interpret through the outreach. Uh those needs into a facility that can accommodate and be flexible to serve multiple purposes with a limited. Uh uh funding availability. Also, we made sure that they were uh able to manage state and federal funds, that they had experience doing that. And so that they would be able to create documents that allow us to bid this project and be compliant with all the requirements. Uh as well as allow us to manage this project adequately. Um we did ask for qualifications on construction management as well, because we anticipate. Uh requiring the same consultant to support us through construction management. Although the professional services agreement we're proposing to you today does not include construction management services. Um and if I advance, um as I said, we selected Architects West. Which are located in Court Lane, they had vast experience on facilities of this kind. With a mix of municipal and uh educational facilities and even uh community centers, just like ours. Um they were super engaging, they demonstrated their understanding and interpretation of the architectural features of the current facility. And they had a vision which they're, of course, uh uh it's not a rigid vision. But they have at least an idea of how we could utilize what we have and build upon it. Uh and of course, whatever is gonna be the design will be dependent on the feedback that we receive from uh the rural community and stakeholders using that, right? Um and so ultimately, the agreement we're presenting to you today, as Director uh Rice mentioned to you. Includes not just design, but also permitting and support through bid, uh with a heavy emphasis on outreach. And the total fee amount for this uh agreement uh for these services is five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And of course, you have the accurate number on the screen, just rounding up. Um and then what are the steps forward? Well, we anticipate pre-design activities, which include a lot of outreach and trying to identify the um condition. And um str- do an structural assessment of the existing facility. And exploring the site itself with geotechnical and survey. Um and then beginning the visioning for the facility with uh the programming. What type of services will be provided, what are the uses and how can those uses be set within a facility that is flexible? For any future uses as well. And we anticipate this pre-design stage will take three to four months. And then we will move on to design, which is between six and eight months, where uh the community outreach continues. But at this point, we are providing um successive uh versions of the design. And advancing the refinement of that design. Of course, we uh this set, this uh stage in the design includes building code and uh life safety analysis. Uh analyzing products and materials available. Um and ultimately, delivering a set of bid documents that we can use to bid the project. And during the bidding process and the permitting process, um which we anticipate taking up to two months. We will have the support of this consultant for permits and bid clarification and of course, bid opening and checking of those bids. Okay, and with that, either Director Rice or me are happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you, uh director and interim director, Mr. Milley.
Uh thank you, Mayor. A quick question here, uh I know when I was reading through the packet, it talks about, you know, the the consultant will have three council meetings. How many meetings, like on the community connection, I mean, do they come just for like once or twice before, when they're doing the pre-planning stage? Or is it, they're actually gonna be there for a few days? Or is it they're actually going to be there for a few days to actually get more of the people in the morning, the evening, all that kind of stuff? Could you clarify on that?
So there is a big emphasis in outreach, and so the intent is to do multiple opportunities for, say, open houses. But also an ongoing open comment period that is administered online. And so we will make things available through those that are using their facility currently, having a way to participate and provide input. Even if they cannot attend those open houses. And then we do have council meetings specifically to bring to you. The information we have collected and explain how we are interpreting that. And seek guidance on whether we are moving forward the project in the direction you would like to see it, or if there is other activities you would like us to do.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I guess the last question, considering this is the eastern part. And again, I've familiar with this area quite a lot. Do we have like a Spanish person that will be there at these open houses? To facilitate more better connection with those kind of residents?
Yes, we anticipate having available staff to translate. And all documentation and materials will be provided both in Spanish and in English. Other languages, I would have to check, but I know we have a service for interpreters on the spot.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. I said, so are we like a year out from construction based on that timeline, or is it further out?
Yes, at least one year out.
Okay. And then my other question was, going back to like the pre designed stuff, how extensive is our records of? I mean, did the city of Pasco build this facility back in the seventies? So do we have access to like, was there like a geotech done? Because I I worked on lots of projects where, you know, the geotechnical investigation wasn't done, and those aren't that much money. But I mean, it's it's a cost savings. Basically, you still have like those documents ready. So I was just curious about that.
We are doing research to find as much documentation as possible on the existing facility. We anticipate having to do at least structural assessment on the building. Our contract includes geotechnical, yet if we find that we do not need to do that. That is money that remains unspent, and that's how we administer those contracts. We didn't want to not include it and then find that we did not have an old copy.
Mr. Harpson.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, just comments. The first being, the last time I was there, I think it was fifteen years ago when I was playing basketball. And back then, it was in desperate need of improvement. So I'm happy to see that happening. Another thing that staff talks about, council talks about, and lots of residents talk about is, you know, including all of Pasco and improvements. And so, you know, just tonight, we talked about the Sylvester Street improvements, which go from east to west. And we've got the Broadmore area and the new fire station being built on the far west side. And it's nice to see this area not forgotten along with this and the restrooms at Highlands Park. And then just also really impressed with garnering almost six million dollars in grants for this project. Kudos to staff for that. And then lastly, things like this, activities like this, and in centers and spaces like this. I've read a lot of different studies that show that they keep kids out of trouble. And keeps kids off of drugs, out of gangs, and gives them an environment to compete, build relationships. And, you know, adding the the kind of homework room kind of study session area is really good. I can just picture, you know, kids having a, you know, playing basketball and then going right into homework and things like that. So I'm super excited and. I had one more point, but I forgot it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Peralos.
Turned it off. I turned it off. We've been doing that all night. So no, no questions really, just comments. I do want to say kudos. Thank you for focusing on this project. I know this has been on council agenda several years. I've been and other council members throughout the years have been part of the hearing process. We've requested from our legislators, from our senators to award us funds. And so thank you for pushing on this project. I know Director Rice will be the excellent person, Director of Fund, for this project. With his ideas and, you know, the contributions, especially from the community in in East Pasco. Appreciate that you're considering, you're taking into consideration the interpreters. There is at least two different languages spoken in that area. I actually served as a lunch buddy at Verge Robinson. So a lot of the kids there would go to the MLK for after school programs, volunteered with the Y M C A. So there's a lot of need. Yes, that building is an old, old building. So I'm happy to see this project coming along. And I just can't wait for the final, final product. So thank you again. And I do look forward to the outreach effort on behalf of Pasco and the company that's going to be stepping in. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Peralos. With that, it looks like we've completed our items for discussion. We're going to move on now to miscellaneous council discussion. I'll just kick it off with one thing. With the wonderful weather we've been having, I would just like to thank our crews that have been out there. Tariously salting, plowing and spraying whatever that slippy stuff is, the ice melt. Out there and making sure that we're safe. I, you know, I had the pleasure of helping push a neighbor out, especially. Right after the snow and and it now seems that no one's getting stuck in my neighborhood. So that's always a positive thing. And hopefully, we've been able to mitigate any damages or injuries. But again, thanks to our crews who have been, I'm sure, twenty four seven for the past several nights. And I'm sure they're, I know I'm not looking forward to it, but I'm sure there's more coming. And again, thank you very much for your service. So, Mr. Lincoln, then I see some lights.
No further updates this evening. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's go to Mr. Harpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding, I believe it was last week, Councilman Peralos. Discussed a resolution regarding the fentanyl crisis, similar to what Wackom County Council did. And theirs was asking Governor Inslee to declare a state of emergency regarding that. And I just want to make sure that was the same intent. Is probably what doing that would free up state funding for emergency expenditures, things like that. And the, one of the goals could be saturating our area with plenty of Narcan kits for emergency responders. And and other public places where lots of people are and gather. The Herald had an article today that Tri-Cities has suffered five hundred overdose deaths from fentanyl in the last eight years. And so if that, I think that was the intent, I just wanted to clarify that. And then if so, we definitely have to support that. And I think we should, as a council, should petition. Or fellow councils here in the Tri-Cities to do the same. If more and more do it, then perhaps we can get the attention of the governor and and get some of that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpson. That's, I took that notion away, and I think that was a general consensus, was council was looking to provide something to the governor. And those who can make the expenditures.
I think that was the takeaway for for staff as well, though. I think maybe a nuance would be that it go to our, our, at least our local legislator. Delegation, but but the targeted audience, I think we can speak to our lobbyist team about who to best send it to. To make sure that it has the most impact possible for the session.
And I think, as Mr. Harpson said, if we can socialize that locally before sending it out, it might be of more value. I'm certainly happy to talk to other mayors and to try or Quad Cities, whatever we want to call ourselves. So whatever I can do to be of help, I'm happy to do that. Councilmember Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I appreciate Councilman, Councilmember Harpson for bringing that up. You know, I I was kind of cautioned today, someone did bring up, what do you mean by state of emergency? And just because the last couple of years with state of emergencies and, you know, not, we don't want to give the governor, I guess, any more extra power. So, no, I more or less, it was just a statement from the body to our to our legislators to not, you know, with the supplemental packages for budgets and stuff. Let's get the funding in there. And like you said, start addressing this stuff and given, like today, when we saw that demonstration. EMS and fire, they need help, they need more resources. So anyway, we can free up that money, our tax money. That was the main intent of of that. But I I just wanted to say, I wanted to just give a shout out to Director Rice and Tri City Animal Shelter and the comms team. They're doing a really good job. I've been thoroughly impressed with the new website and a lot of communications that are coming out of there. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to Director Rice and his team. Thank you.
Excellent. Seeing no more lights, great news is we still have more. We do have need for a thirty minute executive session. And that executive session is going to be discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation. Under revised Code of Washington, section forty two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, Roman numeral I. Again, that's current or potential litigation under that section. We will have need for thirty minutes. I know we just took a break, just looking around council, we need another one before we pop in for thirty minutes. Seeing none, then, is that a yes? Okay, five minutes? Flash, five minutes, good. Flash, five minutes? Yeah, we'll go three minutes. So we'll start executive session at nine twenty four for thirty minutes. Should be out by nine fifty four. We'll see.
You
It is now 10:04 and we have completed our executive session and city council is adjourned.
(Music)